Like the, um... hotspot uses a lot of the phone signal, phone signal. Not very strong. I am connected to a network. I was connected to it.
Mary, do you have the last one for your network?
Yeah. Um, this is for our...
Can we show up here? There's another showing up.
Okay.
It needs to be shown up. But now it's not showing up. It should be on top of the list. Okay. It's not showing up. It was showing up in a list.
I turned it off.
Um, now it's not showing up again, so I have to wait for it to show up here. Okay. Nothing? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this Northfield Township Planning Commission August 19th, 2015 meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Please call the role, Mr. Stanalacho.
Mr. Iquinto. Here. Ms. Chick.
Here.
Ms. Chockley.
Here.
Mr. Kuzno.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Mr. Dignan is absent with notice, and I'm here, Stanalacho.
Okay. And we have Chris Olson here from the Huron River Watershed Council, who is doing a presentation tonight for us, member of the public, Lisa Lumbel, our recording secretary, and Mary Byrd, our staff, and Mr. Pink. Welcome, everyone. Okay. I have no changes to suggest to the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve it as distributed.
Prior to that, I would suggest, and I would move, to move our meeting down to the conference center. There is room for the public that is here, and for us. It is an air-conditioned facility downstairs, instead of us sweltering for the next two hours.
Do we have a second for that motion? Hearing none. We'll move on with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for approving it as distributed?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Roman, support by Ms. Chick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, thank you. Now is our opportunity for call to the public. If anyone would like to address the commission, please come up to the microphone, turn it on, tell us your name, your address, and you have three minutes to address us. After two and a half minutes, I'll show the yellow, and after three minutes, I'll show the red. So is there anyone who would like to speak to us tonight? Nope, seeing no one. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. In your packet, you see a letter from GYOA Trucking, listing the materials that were to be stored on site. We needed this list to approve their conditional use permit at the prior, one of our prior meetings, and now we have that list. And you can see there are no hazardous materials listed there, so it can move forward. Any comments by any of the commissioners about that? Okay, thank you. Reports. Board of Trustees' report, Ms. Chick.
Board of Trustees has not met since our last Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. ZBA, we had, oh, Mr. Dignan's not here. Staff report. Is there anything you'd like to share, Ms. Byrd?
No, I don't have this time.
Okay, thank you. Planning consultant report. We don't have our planning consultant on board yet. Mr. Pink, can you enlighten us as to the negotiation process, and when we might expect the Board of Trustees to approve that contract?
Barring any unforeseen circumstances, it'll be approved Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, at their workshop meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have no public hearings, all business. We have our discussion of the green infrastructure survey with Chris Olson from the Huron River Watershed Council. Welcome, Ms. Olson.
Thank you.
Can I help you pass anything out?
I'm Danielle. Pass. Do I need to be on the microphone? That's...
You do, and you'll probably need to carry it around with you if you're gonna move around at all.
Okay, does that work? Very good. Okay. Yeah, so I am here to report on what we had done at the May 20th workshop. The, and if you were there, we had a presentation about green infrastructure and watersheds and planning, and then we put together a green infrastructure map there at the meeting by drawing on Mylar, and so I'm here to kind of present the results of that. So, yeah, Marlene, if you want to pass these out, since I have to use only one hand, or I can pass this and you can, I'm gonna keep one. You can take one and pass it down, just like in school. So I have the report that came out of that, and then I have a couple of things that could be the next steps coming out of this. And I'll explain what these are. So the first document that you guys are gonna get is really just kind of a recap of what we did on May 20th. And so it's the Northfield Township Green Infrastructure Session, and it really gives briefly kind of the same information that we talked about at that workshop on May 20th. And so you can read this. I think this was in your packets or was emailed to you before, too, so you've probably had a chance to look at it. So I won't spend too much time going over it, but it mostly goes over what we, what we talked about that night, and it has all the same maps in it that we had presented on that night. And the, and it also talks about the process we went through to draw these hubs, sites, and links which formed the green infrastructure network in your township. And then it talks about next steps in this process. So the Watershed Council is here to continue to work with the township on, you know, what, now that you have this map, what can we do to work with, you know, incoming development and activities in the township so that we're also maintaining our green infrastructure? And then it, oh, what happened to the map? It's on, and then there's the draft green infrastructure map itself, which is here, and also this is the large version of it. And so this is something that we can always make changes to it, and but as, as a sort of map, poster-sized map, we can put it, you can put it up and just keep it up in your township. So as you're looking at things going on in your township, you'll always have this as a reference. So for instance, in Linden Township, they have this up on their wall, and so, for instance, some of you may have heard, they had a proposed sand and gravel mine out there in the Pinney-Warloo Rec area, which is near Chelsea. So they were able to look at this map and make compelling arguments for not citing this sand and gravel pit where it was proposed to be cited. And it turns out that they were able to convince the DNR to actually do a land swap. And so now that land that was proposed to be a sand and gravel mine is now going to be DNR, Warloo, Pinney Recreation Area land. So they were able to, this map was helpful to them in that process. So that's one kind of thing you can use this map for. You can use it in recreation planning. I see you have some, some planning for the, for the village area posters up here, but planning for trails and other kinds of greenway networks. So this is a good map to use for that. So I don't know if we want to just lay this on a table somewhere, or put it up, and I'll continue talking.
I could snip it up here.
And so in terms of the next steps, I mean, one thing, if we could stop now and talk a little bit about the map, if you'd like to do that, or I can go ahead and talk about the ideas for next steps. Which would you prefer?
Next steps.
Okay, so I'll just go through. And so what we've typically done with other communities is, now that we have this map and people have had a chance to look at their township and the natural areas in the township, we can work with you and, and take a look at what you have already as policies in your master plan and zoning ordinances, and then make recommendations, do kind of an audit of what you have now on the books, and give recommendations for what we would propose to, to add or to change as policies that will help protect this green infrastructure. So those other things that I passed out are a couple of checklists that we put together for master plans and zoning ordinances, where we read through those documents and we make recommendations based on those checklists. And the other thing I passed out was an actual example from Salem Township, where we just did this process, and I presented that to their Planning Commission, and they're looking into adding, because they're actually in the midst of reviewing their planning, their master plan, as is Webster. And so I just actually got an email today from Webster Planning Commission with their draft new master plan, and they have put language that talks about their green infrastructure network, and they've included maps from the Watershed Council in their master plan. So they have that all in their master plan. So those are things that we can provide. We can provide maps of natural areas, that map itself, other kinds of maps you're interested, you'd be interested in updating in your master plan. And so those are the other documents I handed out, just to give you an idea of what we're doing in other communities. But if there's other ideas, we have, for this particular project, we have until December to, to provide dedicated staff time. But as a Watershed Council in this community, we also provide that as a resource for our member governments, which you are. So we can continue to work with you as time goes on.
So you haven't looked at our zoning ordinance yet?
Right.
And these are all the things you would look for
Right.
in our zoning ordinance. So if we have some deficiencies, you may, you would make suggestions.
Right, right.
Then we would take a look at changing our zoning ordinance
Right, right.
to match.
And I can, we can, I can review both your zoning ordinance and your master plan, and then that document will be with you, and whenever you're ready to make changes, you'll have that as a reference. I don't know where you are in your master plan update. It's every five years, but you've done it recently.
Nowhere. No. We, we're in the process of putting together the survey.
Okay.
But that's taken some time, and that's not imminent, as far as I can tell, that we'll be getting that out. I mean, like within the next month.
That's kind of the first step in the review, the revision?
Yes. We would like to know what the public thinks about
Right.
development or not in our, in our township. So
Right.
that's part of the questions of the survey, but not all of the questions.
Right. And so if I was to do this sort of recommendation checklist for you, you would have that whenever you're ready to start looking at those kinds of things.
Okay.
Yes?
I just, can you help me understand this
Sure.
first map, the Northfield Township remaining natural areas. Each, there's numbers on each of these areas.
Yes.
What do those numbers mean?
So that, that is kind of our first look at natural areas in the watershed. That's this map here. And that's what we call our bio reserve map, and that is a map of the remaining natural areas in the Huron watershed. And so this is a zoom-in of Northfield Township. And so we created that map back in 2004, using aerial photos and computer mapping data. And there's about 1,700 different natural areas all throughout the watershed of varying sizes. So those are woodlands, wetlands, grasslands, creeks. Intact, what you would consider as sort of more than 10 or 20 acres of a natural area. And so we mapped all that out, and then we ranked it. That's why they're different colors
Okay, so...
based on different kinds of data.
Okay. The priority is, these, this was based on photographs, right? Like aerial photographs, or were they actually auditing those properties to see what was there?
No. It was not, that's kind of the third step, but the, this map was created by an overall, looking at the whole watershed with aerial photos.
Okay.
And then we used other kinds of data. Once we had those boundaries, we used, we used other kinds of data to sort of rank them based on, you know, what their potential quality is. But that's a good point, that we only did that from a high, sort of high in the sky point of view. The next step that we're working on, well, is this green infrastructure mapping. So now we have it on a township scale, where we're coming to each community, and you guys look at it, and you know more about what's going on on the ground than just this larger-scale view. So now we have them mapped on, on this poster. Further, we're also doing field assessments
Yeah.
inventories of properties, where property owners give us permission. We've actually done about, I don't know, 15 or so in Northfield Township since, since that workshop.
Yeah.
And so we have been going out and doing field assessments.
Yeah, I think that would probably give a better or more accurate assessment
Yeah.
of what actually is going on in those areas.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the idea is that we have 250,000 acres of these natural areas, and so the first, we wanted to know where they were. Now we want to know, get a better idea and hone in on where we can get permission, on what's actually going on on the land.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah.
Can I apologize?
Please.
I was here at the meeting when we, when we were doing this
Right.
project. And did you feel when you were speaking to the people that were here and that were working with you on this, that you were getting a good, I want to say, ran, a sampling of what's going on around the township, of where most of the people that were helping you with this, you know, from specific areas, like it wasn't like an overall township assessment?
Geographically, I, I mean, I wouldn't know, but it felt like people were from all over, geographically, from all over the township. I don't know, you might have a better sense of that, Marlene.
It seemed to me like when, when they were coming up and drawing areas on the map, they were talking about areas that were around their homes.
Yeah.
So, you know, so even out in the eastern portion of the township, there were, there were people up in the northeastern portion of the township. I don't know about the, some of the other areas. Well, I know the southwestern portion, there were people. And then some of us live in some of these areas, too.
Right.
So we participated.
I mean, if there's a way to get it out and have more input, that would be great.
Question is, you know, there were probably, what, 50 people here, maybe 30 people here that were participating?
Thirty.
Yeah, that, if we had more, we'd have more information.
Right. Yeah. Or even somehow doing it online. People can always add their input. Given, I mean, now we have something to work with. We have a map that exists. People can look at what we have and make changes. You had suggested even the windshield survey and driving around and looking at the
Right.
the borders from the roads to get a better idea.
Right. It's interesting to see how much land, you know, on page seven, where you've got the natural areas, how much land is set aside in conservation and recreation areas already? All the gray-hatched areas.
Yeah, within, within the greenbelt area especially.
Right.
And there's some legacy land conservancy properties. And that map actually doesn't show as much as the map. I guess it most, well, there's some areas on the map on page 12, which is like the big map, where we have similar hatching. It's all red, though, but I think there's even a few more areas up near Horseshoe Lake, and maybe not so many more of it.
Can you talk any, about the importance of the natural areas that are upstream of the lakes? I know some of the drainage, if people go out and put, or farmers even, put fertilizers like phosphates and stuff on their properties, and it goes into the, into the drains and ends up into the lakes.
Yeah.
Are these lakes having trouble with that right now?
Yes. And actually, I should have brought, we have a Horseshoe Creek, Creek Report. It's a four-page document that talks about that. And there are some issues with drainage in Horseshoe Creeks, Creeks. Some parts of it are, are straightened and do receive sediment and phosphorus. And that can come both from farm fields and from impervious hard surfaces, roads, driveways, rooftops. So there are a lot people can do, that farmers can do to control the phosphorus. Of course, they don't want the phosphorus to just go running off into the lake, because that's, they're applying that. So that's, they could save money by just applying as much as they need. So working with their local conservation district would be helpful for farmers. And then for residents, same thing with fertilizing your lawns. We actually, there's now a state fertilizer regulation that talks about low or no phosphorus in fertilizer. So that's helpful as well. But we would, we would recommend, obviously recommend that low or no phosphorus fertilizer, and also maintaining by buffer around streams, so that a vegetated buffer, 25 feet at least, helps to control that runoff, and it'll intercept that fertilizer runoff before it gets into the creek.
And that's a recommendation you can make when you take a look at
Yes.
zoning ordinance.
Exactly.
Okay, great. So do we have any more questions from any of the other commissioners on this one? So your next job is to go take a look at our master plan and our, and our
Yeah.
zoning ordinance, and then come back with recommendations?
Yes. I mean, if that's something that the Planning Commission would find useful.
Well, I would find it useful.
Other...
Do we have consensus that that would be helpful? I'm not seeing, okay, Mr. Roman thinks so, I think so.
Okay.
Ms. Chick.
And it's not anything that would be
We don't have to
regulatory or anything. It's really more information
Right. It's information that we can choose to adopt later.
Right, exactly.
And there's no charge to the township
Right.
for you to do this.
Right, exactly. And I can work with you further to find example language, so that you don't have to work too hard about creating
Right.
you know, the legal, legal language that you need in ordinance.
Right. I saw a document some time ago where one of the planners from Carlisle Warpman was working with you. Was it Sal?
Sally, Sally Elminger.
Right.
Yeah, they were partners on us with a previous project.
Okay, at another township.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're kind of populating the townships with, with zoning language that seems to work for them, so
Okay.
you know, why reinvent the wheel if you've got other folks who are using it?
I was looking at wellhead protection information
Right, yeah.
on the Wasna County website, and because I know Barton Hills was concerned about this enormous chunk of Northfield Township that feeds
Right.
their water supply.
Right.
Trying to find out what the implications are of that for us and development.
Yes, yes.
Can you shed any light on that?
Yeah, we actually helped Barton Hills with developing their wellhead protection program back in the 90s, I think. And they, so they have public wells where they draw their drinking water from, just within their village. And so a wellhead protection area is, is basically, it's kind of like the watershed for the wells. So where water, where rainwater falls on the ground within a certain zone of influence, they call it, is, the well is sucking up the water. You can imagine it's a straw. You're kind of creating this pressure on the water to come up into the well, and it's got to come from somewhere. So it's, it's coming from a certain area, and they have consultants who will determine that area. And every wellhead protection plan has to deter, do a hydrological study to determine where this comes from. And so Barton Hills did their delineation of this wellhead protection area. So that's basically where their drinking water is coming from on a sort of short-term basis. And they, and part of that wellhead protection area goes up into Northfield Township, it's kind of the southwest part of Northfield Township. So those are areas where, once you know where that is now, you, you know that what happens on the land can impact what happens to the drinking water. So if there were to be any pollutants or changes in that landscape, that can affect the wells, the well water. So that would be why they would be concerned.
So maybe abandoned wellheads, or something that might
Mm-hmm.
allow the water
Yeah.
the contaminants to get down into their water supply would be a danger?
Yep, that could be an issue.
Okay.
Or excessive nitrogen fertilizing, or even phosphorus fertilizing, excessive impervious surfaces. For one thing, you're allowing more pollution, because when you have impervious surfaces like parking lots and roads, pollutants run right off of that from, from your cars or from gasoline stations and, and go into the, into the soil. But you're also depriving that wellhead protection area of recharged water, because the wells get their water from that landscape. So they get their water from the wells. It, you know, originally, it comes from rainwater, percolates down through the soil. So that could be an issue. Any kind of, I mean, we're lucky we're in Wasna County, because they have a very good pollution prevention program in their health department. But gas stations or kind, different kinds of facilities that might handle toxics or gasoline, that kind of thing, you know, then you need to be concerned about making sure there won't be any spills and, or leaks, that sort of thing.
Right.
I don't think you have anything in that area right now.
Not right now, but that's something we should, as a Planning Commission, should keep our eye on, you know, for mitigation purposes, you know.
Yeah, yep. And, and the, the wellhead protection plan has an emergency response section in it, where they've spent some time thinking about that. Oh, what would happen if there was a spill on 23, or something like that? What, we want to make sure everybody knows this is a wellhead protection area, so that they really know to be, to have a good response to that. good response to that. Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, do we have that information?
Oh, the wellhead protection area?
For the southwest corner.
Yes, we, well, we had a, a member of...
Right, she brought a map from Barton Hills.
She, she brought a map. So I, I went to the source, you know, and, and downloaded it from the, um, Washtenaw County website. And so there's an entire report on water, you know, water resource protection and, um, multiple pages with great maps. And, um, and I think it's valuable for us to just have that in our mind as we're looking at, uh, potentially someday, you know, making some changes to the master plan.
Right, right.
And our zoning. So...
Right.
I, I don't think we can have too much information.
Right. Yeah, I think talking about it in your master plan, saying, you know, we know we're in the wellhead protection area for a neighboring municipality. And have, we could even have that on a map quite easily.
Okay. Well, okay. I don't, I guess I don't have any more questions. Does anyone else?
Yeah, I can, I can do that audit fairly next two or three weeks and I can email it to you and, and we can go from there. Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate your time.
Well, thanks for having me and working with us.
Yeah.
Does anyone need another?
Well, maybe, um, members of the public would be interested.
I just want to mention, we, we also... Can put that on our website. As you know, you had the link to our website. Um, and we've been putting those on our website as we've been creating them for each community. So all the residents in Northfield can look on there.
Okay.
And the, the presentation that you gave when you were here, you said that was on your site as well? Is it still up there?
I have a link on there, I think. But it links to your, what, your people, or a website that came from Northfield Township. Cause I personally didn't, don't know how to get it on the website.
Well, I was interested in that portion where you were talking about, you know, the, um, like, um, what percentage of impervious surfaces is still good and, you know, that kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, was that our meeting where she actually presented?
When I did the...
Oh, she did the slideshow.
The work, the presentation.
Yeah, anybody can see that if, um, we just make sure they know the date it was on.
Right, right.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
This is helpful.
Stay cool.
You too. Okay. Moving on, we have no new business. Um, we have the minutes of August 5th to, um, take a look at. And it was short and sweet. So, um, does anyone notice any, uh, changes that need to be made to it?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 5th meeting.
I, I need to suggest one, um, change however, uh, first. Um, it was, um, Jim Mulcrone who came, um, under correspondence, who came to speak, um, well, provided comments. Uh, so anyway, it was Jim and not Renee, but that's the only change I noted. So, go ahead, Mr. Iaquinto.
I already made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Iaquinto and support by Ms. Chick, um, to adopt the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. Um, next item, policy review and discussion. Um, you'll notice that I did, um, distribute the bylaws of the planning commission because there was some mention last time about, well, what do our bylaws say about minutes? And they're pretty silent on that, uh, topic other than the secretary, uh, takes care of that. Um, and, um, we were going to talk about how we wanted our minutes done, um, at this meeting. Do we have any, anyone who would like to say anything before I do?
I...
Yes.
I think it's proper that we mirror the actions of the township board.
Okay.
They have decided to follow a certain pattern for obvious reasons. They have taken guidance from our township attorney with the, in respect to the minutes and the way that they are taken. So I, my sole suggestion is to follow and mirror the township board.
Ms. Chick?
I concur.
I agree.
And, um, I also, uh, think that the shortened version that the Board of Trustees, um, does is fine. Uh, however, um, I did want to bring up that we do need more information on our minutes than we have had as it comes to, um, making motions. And unfortunately, I could not get the copier downstairs to copy this information from, uh, MSU Extension on what we should include in our minutes as we're deliberating toward a, um, decision and, and maybe you can make it, do it about four pages worth.
I was going to say, like, I don't know that I can get.
I can read it.
Well, to me, that's one of the things we should require our planning consultant.
I can read it too.
That's one of the things we should give, ask our planning consultant to explicitly prepare the motions covering all the bases, either approval or denial, encompassing all the critical issues that should be placed in the motion. So that way we don't miss. Because as diligent as you may be, I may be, we all may be, we still may miss a faction. And again, that's what we are having them as our planning consultant for. In the past, prior to Carlisle Wartman, that was done on this board. Cause I was part of the board when that was happening. And it made it very concise and easy. The planning consultant prepared two motions, one to approve, one to deny, covering all the bases of all the ordinances that we should encompass. So that would be my recommendation, that that is one of the requirements of our planning consultant. Because again, they are the experts. We are semi-volunteers, even though we come in and be prepared, we view everything, but we're still not experts in the ordinance.
And we can still add or amend or change something that we're not comfortable with.
Right. Oh, yeah, most definitely.
I agree.
But that is the basis of the legal requirements to contain within the motion.
That would be very helpful. I agree. But, but to add our, our comments would be helpful also, Mr. Stanalacho.
Now, one of the things that was brought up at the last meeting, cause I watched it, is there was a letter from the township attorney about...
There wasn't a letter from the township attorney.
It was a recommendation.
Yeah, I tried to get the letter and I couldn't.
Regardless, there's one out there. When we end up, when we end up doing these minutes, they become a legal document.
They do.
Right. So, okay. So what we're doing is we have two choices to do. We either end up getting, in my opinion, we end up getting a court recorder, just like a deposition, where every single thing that we talk about and speak and say, including members of the public, everything is written down verbatim. So it's an actual, actual, actual record. Because the way our minutes have been, it's been a summary. And then we basically say, well, that's a legal document now. And that's not a legal document when you have somebody that's summarizing what somebody says. So in my opinion, we either end up going the route of putting everything in by basically having a court recorder come in and do everything if we want our minutes to look like that. Or we end up going something that ends up being more concise and shortened, which basically the minutes, as they're dictated through state laws, have certain recommendations and requirements that you need to have. And I don't think that the people that wrote that state legis, that, that legislation at the state level purposely left out in fact about having all this details. And I think that there, that came from someplace and there's a particular reason to have that. So, I mean, you can't, I don't believe you can have in between...
Do you want to read all these pages? Okay, there's like four pages to read.
Well, if you don't mind, please.
No, we, right, we can, we can get copies of it, but, um, I would like, um, that information read.
I'm only asking because I want to see what's in here.
Right.
Of course, they're not here.
But you could start at the top of that page and read...
All right. You want me to read it?
Yeah, for the purpose of the public, because I think it's, uh, important that they know and we know what our obligations are, um, as far as recording information.
Okay, so...
I, I'll, I'll preface this to, this comes from MSU Extension in their citizen planner, uh, training, um, program for master citizen planners.
This is just their opinion though.
You want the MTA one? The MTA one is right here that I passed out the last time.
That's what you're handling.
And this is, this is the MTA. So...
The MTA is one page instead of four pages, then?
It is one page instead of four page, but they do talk about, um, about recording your, um, yeah, and I passed this out last time. So, um, I, I think it's important that we understand the ramifications of this. And, um, MSU Extension is no slouch when it comes to, uh, legalities and, uh, training planner, training citizen planners. So go ahead, Mr. Fink.
But before he does, we follow the guidelines by MTA, not by the Michigan Extension Fund.
We file neither of the guidelines.
We, what, what we always have done is we consult with MTA for advice. Yes or no?
Yes. Some people call the MTA and get advice. We, we follow the statute and our attorney. And so you can call the MTA and they can give you their advice. You can call, you can call, you know, you guys, not everything just because it's written down by a university doctor.
Yes, I agree.
So, you know, you can, you can, you can, you know, I, I don't even know what this says. So I'm sort of feeling like I'm commenting, but I just want to, huh?
Please read it and you'll, and then we'll all know.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I was going to, but, but, okay. You want me to start reading it?
Sure, thank you.
Deliberations of the Planning Commissioner's ZBAA before a motion is made should focus on ensuring conformance with ordinance standards. The decision-making body must ensure that the standards required for review are used properly and made part of the record. To avoid chal, excuse me, to avoid challenges of decisions, it's critical to follow an effective decision-making process. It's essential to support decisions using the standards of the zoning ordinance. It is not enough to state that an applicant should be denied because it will be detrimental to the site or community as a whole. The record must show sufficient facts to back up the findings made according to the ordinance standards. For instance, if traffic is a concern, describe these concerns as precisely and factual as possible. A well-supported decision provides the background needed to build a solid legal foundation for the decision. The Planning Commission and ZBAA may attach reasonable conditions for rezoning and approval. Conditions are allowed only for plan unit development approvals and rezonings under the state's conditional rezoning provision. And, and they're also allowed for conditional uses. The conditions must be related to the standards of review. In addition, the decision-making body must consider the reasonableness test. If the condition were not attached to the decision, the standards for review would not be met and the request denied. Decision-making principles. After deliberating the facts of a case, it is time for Planning Commissioner or ZBAA member, ZBAA to make a decision. A motion to approve, deny, or approve with conditions should contain the facts to support the decision reached and who is responsible for ensuring that conditions are met. For example, you may require that a landscape plan be submitted to the zoning administrator to certify that all conditions have been met. The motion must contain a maker and supporter, a description of the request, the action, approval, in parentheses, approval, approval with conditions, denial, or tabling. Conditions attached to the affirmative decisions, reason for the action taken, the standards that apply. Remember, if the members of the board are not comfortable with making a decision, they should table the issue until the needed information can be obtained. It is important to avoid rushing to a decision. Even motions to a table, to table a decision must be clear to everyone on the board plus the applicant. It is important to avoid even the perception of backroom decision-making before formal votes. Private conversations among board members before or during the meeting should be avoided, even if they are not technically in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Express your opinions during the public hearing process to help the audience and fellow board members understand how you reached your decision. This will help demonstrate to the public that a fair and impartial decision was made. Then they provide a sample motion. I move that the request for site plan 05-07 by Ketsi Development Company for a special use permit to construct burger bar and restaurant in 1956 Center Street be approved in conformance with the requirements of section 3.1 and 7.8 of the Spart, Spartyville?
Spartyville, that's their fictional town.
Spartyville. It's kind of an interesting name. Spartyville zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. Include a service drive on the site plan connecting the burger bar and parking lot to the Spartan Shopping Center parking lot adjacent to Center Street in conformance with section 2.5 of the zoning ordinance. Revise the roadway sign dimensions and height in conformance with section 2.2 of the zoning ordinance. I'm not going to go through all of these.
You don't need to do all the rest.
Then there's other conditions. Then there's findings of fact, one of the most, most effective means of documenting decisions and through findings of fact. A concise statement of action taken by the members. It normally includes the same information contained in a motion such as the one above, but in more detail, including description of the requested action, motion made by the Planning Commissioner of ZBAA, reasons the standards were deemed to be met or not met, and any conditions attached to approve the request. The findings may be drafted during a meeting and completed as part of approval of minutes at the following meeting. And that's a critical point that you all need to know. The findings may be drafted during a meeting and completed as part of approval of minutes at the following meeting. Neither the findings nor the minutes are official until reviewed and adopted by the decision-making body. Again, something that you need to realize. Um, the Michigan Zoning Act now says the decision on a special land use shall be incorporated in a statement of findings and conclusions relative to the special land use with specifics, with, with specifies the basis for the decision and any conditions opposed. And then it goes into 15 reasons meetings fail and then I think...
That's good enough.
Documenting decisions.
That's good enough.
I, I will say that, you know, for whatever it's worth and sort of a bit of unsolicited advice, um, uh, I think you're arguing all cross purposes, to be frank. Because what Mark is saying is that the discussion elements of the debate, uh, are not required to be part of the minutes. And that is correct under state law. Ultimately, that becomes a policy decision by the Planning Commission. Um, I happen to agree that, uh, having some, um, some, um, explanation of the discussion is important, but not a detailed word-for-word conversation of the dialogue. What you're reading here is about findings of fact and about supporting your motions as it relates to the zoning code. And I would agree with Mr. Iaquinto that that is, in fact, um, not only the responsibility of the planning consultant, but should fall as a big portion of the planning consultant's responsibility to help this planning commission ensure that their motions of either approval or denial are based on very specific issues related to the zoning ordinance. And the other thing I would say is you don't have to have findings of fact made at the same meeting. You can come back when the minutes are actually officially approved and clarify findings of fact. So, um...
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Um, but I think, I think it was helpful for, for everyone to realize kind of the process that we, that we need to go through as we're putting and considering our motions and making sure that they're thorough. And, um, so it, it's very difficult to do that on the fly. I do, um, agree with Mr. Iaquinto that we should have our planner, uh, take a first crack at them on pro and con, and then having us, um, look at them and make sure that they meet, uh, our concerns also. So, Mr. Stanalacho.
I would like to, um, put forward something to amend our bylaws to include language that basically has our minutes mirror the township board's minutes or how the format that the township board's minutes are. So that way there is something in our bylaws saying, here's how our minutes are going to look. And regardless of whether or not that it's under state law, state law is what it is that I, I listed down in the minutes that I took. This is not then the first time that's happened. Back, back in 2010, when I was on the planning commission, because I pulled them out, they were, they looked exactly like that. So, um, I have no problems with some details in there. I do have problems with the way that they, they've been in before. They've turned into books and that, that's not the way that minutes are supposed to look. So, uh, the way our minutes look currently for this, uh, the August 5th meeting that we just, uh, adopted, I have no problems with the way that that looks.
Okay.
And I, I would like to actually put some language into our bylaws tonight so that that's the way that from now on it, it continues to look.
I prefer you go and put something together so that we can all look at it and consider for, uh, the next opportunity, uh, next meeting. for the next opportunity, next meeting that we get together. So we're not doing it on the fly to minutes, I mean, our bylaws are something that, you know, we also need to, published, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, so please go ahead and do that and we'll, I'll take a look at it.
In the meantime, I'd like to have the minutes continue to look the way that they were for August 5th from here on.
I appreciate that, yes. Let's, Ms. Lumbel does a great job with the minutes and I do appreciate how, how well and how thorough these are, even though, not even though, without all of the detail, they are totally, totally adequate.
I think that, I know no one's asked this question, but I think for the benefit of those in the audience and for the benefit of the people that are listening to this debate, I think it would be helpful for people to know how our minutes internally are done as Lisa is typing them, because, and Lisa can speak to this, or if you want, I can speak to it, but Lisa has sort of set up a process that the, the, what do they call that?
Oh, when you turn your head, you're not talking to the mic.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to think of the word. When you preserve, when you preserve the, when you preserve the archive, you preserve the, the information. When, when Lisa has those minutes and those minutes are sent in draft form to the township, they're done in PDF. No one has the ability to change any of the language in those minutes when Lisa types them. So the only ability that anyone has to either alter or change the dialogue that exists in those minutes are done at this meeting and via vote of this board. So when Lisa has the draft set of minutes and sends it to the township, those draft set of minutes are what Lisa has deemed appropriate and typed. And then they can be changed by vote of this board. So I just wanted everybody to know that because it's a good process and we're preserving the, we're preserving the, the, the sort of dialogue, if you will, and ensuring that we don't have any issues there.
Okay.
For whatever it's worth.
Okay. So are we able to move on now or do we have more conversation about it?
Chain of command, that's what I was trying to think of.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
In the bylaws, Article 11 amendments, is that, is that referring to this document itself, the bylaws itself? I, I don't know.
I don't know what-
Can you say your question again, I'm sorry to hear.
In the actual copy of the bylaws of the Planning Commission, Article 11 amendments, are those amendments to this document, is that what it's referring to?
Oh, Mr. Stanalacho wants to amend the, the bylaws.
That's, that's my point, is that if there's any amendments, that it be followed in that procedure, okay.
Right. Okay. So we're done with that for the night. Now the opportunity for call to the public. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak with us tonight? Three minutes. I think everyone knows the drill out there, if anyone's interested. Welcome. Hold it up, I want to hear you.
I really have to hold it up. If I stayed just a little bit away, I'd be like you all. Virtually impossible to hear past the first row. Build yourself a great big new room and put this crappy sound system in it, and it's still a crappy sound system, that's not my point. Mr. Roman pointed out that you can't do amendments at will and at whim and you have to post them and invite the public and I'm really glad for that. I think our minutes have been a source of great information for a long time. There's a lot about the function of this township that I'm insanely proud of and enjoy a great deal. There's some movements afoot to change things in this township and it's a concern. I don't understand the drive to provide less information. You know, certainly in a day when you can pick up the news and see any group of 100 people in another country dying trying to get to where there's freedom, the turnout here is appalling. We depend on you guys to protect our homesteads. Again, I'm going to just bring up the issue, we would not be entertaining any change to our master plan had it not been for built more properties. We are amending our master plan for the sake of one suitor and it is the worst possible precedent you could set, you'll never say no to another one. I wish you all the best, thanks for the time.
State your name, Mr. Warburton, and your address too for the-
Oh, surely, Craig Warburton, 450 West Joy Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak with us tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to comments from the commissioners. We'll start with Mr. Iaquinto tonight.
Have a good evening.
Ms. Chick?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. And I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, we have a short meeting for a change. Mr. Stanalacho?
Just want to make sure that everybody keeps their men and women in uniform in their thoughts and prayers, they're allowing us to have this expression and freedom of exchanges, they're, it's on their backs and just want everybody to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kuzma?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Roman? Thank you very much. Okay, so our next regular meeting will be September 2nd. I know of no, we have no applicants currently. We will not have a planner on board very long to actually do anything for us, so I don't really know if we're going to actually meet unless there's something someone is dying to talk about on September 2nd.
I'll make the motion to, to cancel our September 2nd meeting.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Stanalacho and support by Mr. Iaquinto to cancel our September 2nd meeting, in which case our next meeting would be September 16th. However, should a, an applicant suddenly appear and be ready, which is nearly impossible, then we'll have to call it, but I will say-
We don't have to.
Huh?
We don't have to.
Wouldn't have to.
You just have it make it to the 16th, the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't believe it's going to, anything is going to be possible by September 2nd, so. Okay, we have a motion to cancel our September 2nd meeting by Mr. Stanalacho, support by Mr. Iaquinto, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Meeting to adjourn?
All right, motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Ms. Chick, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, thank you very much, everyone.